He never picked up his binder.
Oh, he planned on it.
I've been fighting this cold for three weeks. I can't quite get rid of it. It comes and goes, comes and goes.
What you need to do?
I don't.
Three packs of Endersy.
Endersy?
Endersy, it's that, when you come along back, just dose yourself with vitamins.
I don't know.
Yeah, I've got 3,000 milligrams.
What are we doing? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've got some questions on it, but I think they'll be answered. Okay, you're probably aware, yeah, I gather everyone had the same question, so.
See the tape? See the tape behind it? That's all nobody could see.
All right, what's up, man? Good to see you.
And you.
Welcome back.
You ready?
Let's just take an active rest. Now it all comes clear.
Let's just sit behind the tape.
Is everyone ready? You guys already? Just waiting for the change, and... Bonnie's right there. And... There we go. Hi, everyone. If I could take a seat. We are gonna start the Malibu Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, December 4th, 2017. Kathleen, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Commissioner Euring.
Here.
Chair Pearson.
Here.
We have a quorum with Vice Chair Mark's absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Pledge of Allegiance, and Lester, we'd be honored if you would lead us.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Lester, and nice pants. Practice. Can we have a motion on the approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as staff recommends with item 5C, continue to December 18th, and 5D, continue to December 18th.
I'll second.
Bonnie, is there any comment on that? Has been a lot of changes lately. We're good?
No, that's fine with us.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we're moving forward. Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 22nd, 2017.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Moving forward, item one, ceremonial and presentations. We, in a consistent state that we are, we have absolutely nothing there. Number two, written and oral communication from the public. Does anyone wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Nothing? Okay, Commissioners. Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to address?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Steve?
No, thank you.
As always, can you give us some indication of when the Airbnb will come back to us?
We have not established that yet.
Will be in the first quarter of the year?
It will, it'll, the next, yeah, next thing will be first quarter of the year.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Sure. I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and make a few comments here. So the items before us, our job is to see that they follow the codes and that we can make the findings. So our decisions here are based on that. As people often bring in here, it's not on personalities, it's not on who's lived in Malibu the longest, it's not on who's a good person or a bad person, it's based on us being able to make the findings. If you find that you don't like our vote, you can appeal it. You have 10 days to do so to the city. But I do appreciate everyone coming down. We're all here committed to having an open mind through, until we get to deliberations and make our votes. So when people speak here, we absolutely take it into heart, or to heart, and we do appreciate you coming down. Bonnie?
Parker will put up my little slides. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. Hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. The first thing I wanted to mention is that on, how does it say, November 13th, we presented a finalized policy to the City Council for their concurrence on CDP extensions. And so that's being formally published now by staff on the website, and, yeah, I guess probably, yeah, we'll probably send it out on social media and stuff like that, too. But that's now being implemented. The policy, for those of you who are new to this issue, outlines, provides some clarification about what will be considered due cause when someone's requesting a, an extension of their coastal development permit, and then also outlines what would be considered a reasonable extension. The reasonable extension would be for a maximum permit life of five years unless there are some extraordinary circumstances. So look for that on the city's website. And then, next, I wanted to... Oh, sorry. Did you have a question?
Just the, on the, the, I don't know what you just talked about. I just wanted to...
To your microphone.
I just, I was reading the article where you were speaking about, and there's nothing in there about five years, that I saw. A maximum of five years?
Oh, they, that's something the City Council asked to have added.
But it's not in there now? It was not in that document you just showed us?
Oh, well, it should have been.
I mean, I couldn't miss.
Can we, can we put, I think it might have been at the very end.
I think it's the, it's one sentence at the very bottom.
I think so, too.
Yeah, so the last sentence.
Yes, the last, last, last.
I couldn't read that fast enough.
Okay, good. Okay, now, on to the fun thing. On December 14th, the city will be hosting its annual holiday open house. All of the community is invited to attend. I hope you will come. There'll be snacks, and there's usually some kind of cool art and musical entertainment. It's a really nice event. So that'll be Thursday, the 14th, starting at 4:00. And then, the final thing I wanted to mention is that the planning department, together with the other reviewing agencies here at the city, are starting a pilot program for concurrent submittals of projects before they get a planning commission or a planning director decision. So we wanted to do this on a pilot program basis, and we will, we're gonna be carefully screening the projects that we allow into this program. This fits nicely with the, the new extension policy because it will allow these types of projects to go ahead and get started in their plan check before they're, they get a final decision. So the way it would work is that, number one, the project must not have any site plan review, variance, or any discretionary things. It should be a really simple project. We've outlined these parameters on the waiver form, that's the second part. The applicant and the property owner would be required to accept all risk associated with starting the plan check process ahead of having their final decision and conditions of approval. And then the other criteria is that they will need to have already gotten all of their planning stage conformance reviews from, you know, Public Works, Environmental Health, and geology, coastal engineering, that kind of thing. So all of those requirements would be known. So basically, we wanna see how this, how this might work for these very simple projects for applicants that are willing to, you know, take responsibility for that. We've had interest expressed in this a lot over the years, and when we've mentioned it to you all, the planning commissions, not maybe you exact planning commissioners, but previous planning commissions have not expressed objection to this. So we're gonna start that, we're gonna try it out for about a year, see how it goes, and hopefully that will run smoothly.
How do you pick who gets into that program?
Believe it or not, there's not all that many projects that are that simple, that don't have any discretionary requests, so automatically you get a pretty short list. So we're gonna start from there.
Question. If they have all their approvals from the agencies, why aren't they coming to us as a CDP?
They will be, but sometimes there is a backlog to get onto the planning commission's agendas, so this would just give them perhaps a month or two or three head start.
Okay, now, when this came up a couple of years ago, several of the developers were concerned about the fact that they were taking a year to get things approved, et cetera, and this would jump ahead of them, or put them farther down the pile. How does that work? I mean, wouldn't you go through faster if you had your CDP? And you couldn't jump in the pile? Then now you can jump in the pile without a CDP?
Which pile are you talking about? The plan check pile?
Yeah.
Well, in talk, in discussions with the other departments, it will just kind of flow with their regular workload. They would be reviewing, conducting this plan check review anyway, so it's not expected to make a difference that way. And again, these are simple projects that have already cleared their planning stage conformance, so...
Are we gonna know that they've been through that process or not? I don't know if it matters.
Not necessarily. If you would like to know, we can make that part of your staff report, but it, in theory, shouldn't make any difference.
Are you gonna select, or just anybody who's qualified for that gets to do it?
It's, the, the criteria I mentioned are the basic criteria, but then if there's, you know, something particular about the project or the neighborhood or the property where it wouldn't be a good idea to get out in front of the planning commission approval, then we'll, we'll screen those out. It's also wouldn't, we wouldn't take a project that, you know, had, that wasn't determined to be exempt from CEQA, you know, if it's got an EIR, of course, we're not gonna throw that one into plan check.
But that's not a big deal. But would the applicants out there know that they got rejected and somebody else got accepted?
If they ask, yes.
So we, we're, we're gonna wait a year and see if, if the development industry in town objects to what's happening?
Well, the, the main thing is to see if the process runs smoothly, and if it ends up that there's an advantage, and it, it works, and it seems to work well.
Yeah, it won't ever be a requirement, I don't believe, because this is required you to, to take on the risk of going through plan check early, but it's to see whether there are problems with, if it, if it's helpful with staff, if it's causing problems.
Yeah, if it ends up adding to the workload, or, or, you know, creating a backlog or something like that, then we'll just go back to business as usual.
Okay, well, I wanna change the, the subject, but congratulations on this. It's a move that has been a long time desired and a long time coming. But I wanna go back to the first issue that you raised about the extensions. There are a number of people who live up on, or who live up, that's Freudian slip, they have permits to build up on in Sinalcanian, and of course, they can't because the fire department won't give them permits, and they won't give them permits because the water district won't supply them with water, and they won't allow that they have wells, and so on, and so on. So those people are just caught in limbo. How hypothetically do you plan to deal with those people in terms of your extension policy?
Those types of circumstances that are beyond an applicant's control are the types of things that, in my opinion, would be, would, would support a due cause finding, so we'll be looking at that type of thing specifically, the extraordinary circumstances that an applicant can't easily change on his own.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. We're moving forward to the consent calendar. Does anyone wanna pull the one thing?
I move, receive and file.
Okay.
This needs an approval. It's approval of the minutes, we need a motion.
Okay, I move, we approve the minutes.
Second?
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Moving on to item 4A, Coastal Development Permit Number 16-045 and Variance Number 17-041, An Application For The Installation Of A New Alternative On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Continued From November 20th At 6453 Sycamore Meadows Drive. May we have a report, please?
Good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the Planning Commission. The project you have this evening will take place at the corner of Escondido Drive and Pacific Coast Highway. There's a apartment, there's three apartment buildings that have existed there prior to cityhood, and what we're proposing with this project is a replacement of the existing wastewater treatment system. The building was built in '57, and since then, it had a wastewater treatment system that's located within the, what, what we would call today the required stream setback. And the applicant has done a remodel to the building, however, now it's time to do some upgrades to the wastewater treatment system. A variance is included because the new system will go essentially in the place of the old system, but as I mentioned, because of the code requirement in our LIP, the chapter 17 requires a 100-foot setback from the stream. And in the case of this particular property, if you were to apply that setback, that's where the buildings are located, or there is a hillside behind the buildings. This is an aerial photo of the property. The property is highlighted in green. What you see there in the brown color, that's the ESHA, the ESHA buffer area in the stream is the blue line that cuts through that. This is a larger view of the plans, and what you have here are the various setbacks. So you have the blue line that's roughly in the center there, that's the center line of the stream. The red line shows you 50 feet from the stream, and the dark purple line shows you the 100-foot setback. And as you can see, the 100-foot setback puts you right through the front of the apartment building, and there is a little bit of an area towards the bottom left of that plot plan. However, there are slopes in that area, as well as trees that would meet the requirements of the LIP for protection. So as you can see, the system will be located between the red and the purple line there. The, now what we're talking about is the treatment tanks and the pumps, and those will be located within the 100-foot setback, as well as parts of the drain field, and because of that, we are processing a variance. This is just a copy of the project plans that were included with your packet. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution, which would approve the coastal development permit and the variance so that the system could be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Questions, or no, I'm sorry, disclosures first.
I did send a question to Reva Feldman about the fact that we had no plot plan, and one was supplied later. Better one is supplied tonight.
Okay, I, I lived in that neighborhood in the mid-'70s and have, remember that property, and I drove by it this week to see if my memory was still reality, and it doesn't look like anything's changed on that property at all. I don't think anyone's picked up a leaf or, or anything painted. It doesn't look the same from my memory from 1975 anyhow. And I think that's my disclosure. I know we have questions. Jeff?
Yeah, this is an alternative wastewater system, so I, am I correct in assuming that the, that the output from this system will be Title 22 Water?
Good evening, Commissioners. It won't be designated Title 22. In order to do that, you have to go through tertiary treatment, it's a very expensive process, so the wastewater treatment facility for the Civic Center area is doing that, but it's not normally or regularly done on conventional, or regular type of systems that serve other developments in the city. But it will have highly treated water that would be appropriate for subsurface irrigation, which they're going to do.
John?
Craig, is, where, could you show me where the leach field is? And the question would be, can, can a leach field be on a hill?
I'm sorry, can a leach field be on a?
On a slope.
No, we did investigate that. We spent a lot of time meeting with, early on in this application, probably over a year ago, meeting with the geologist and also meeting with the wastewater designer. We looked at some of the other areas to see if there was potential, the other areas that it could be sited. There was some adverse geology on the west side of the property, as lo, as well as what Richard referred to as some protected trees on the lower part of it. Really, we felt that it was best served in the location because this is the way from the development, it's away from the traffic areas, it's away from the foot air, foot traffic areas, it's an isolated part of the property on the other part of the creek. It won't have any kind of development potential there, it won't have other people accessing that area. So ideally, it, it just worked out that that's the most advantageous area to locate the system, the dispersal part of the system.
Could you put up the slide and show us where the leach field is?
Richard? I'm not sure which slide you had it on. We can, you can see, you can see it on this slide. If you look on the right-hand side, which would actually be the east part of the property, there is the street. At the bottom is the intersection of PCH and Sycamore, and the leach field kind of follows along that portion of the street there, so it's between the 50-foot setback and Sycamore Meadows there. There are two components. You see the, the darker area at the top, that is the, the present field, and the lighter kind of crossed area at the bottom there, and that is the future, which is required by our code.
Okay, so there's some kind of pipe that crosses the stream, then?
There is, that's, it's gonna be attached to the bridge, and the next logical question would be what happens? There will be devices onto that pipe, so if there was any kind of a rupture or disruption in the line, wastewater would stop flowing across there to minimize any kind of a spill or any kind of a potential hazard that could emanate from that.
Do you need an encroachment easement to go on the bridge?
No.
Because it's a private bridge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Steve?
Craig, I, when I looked at the property, it was a three-and-a-half acre property, and so my first reaction was, you know, they're putting it 50 feet from the stream. And I said, has anybody gone back and really done a study to say it really shouldn't go someplace else? And when I looked through the staff report, I couldn't find any report from an expert that said, you know, I tested all these different things, and this is absolutely the only place where this could go. Shouldn't we have one of those?
Well, I can't speak to that. I didn't write the report, but I can tell you and reaffirm that we did investigate the potential to put it other places, and as I said, there, because of adverse geology, the slopes...
Who is, who's "we"?
The, the city geologists, the city environmental health specialist, myself, and other members of my staff.
And like, what kind of investigation did you do?
Well, there's, we sat down with them, we discussed what the potentials were with their consultants of what could be done, and it was, it was a pretty thorough investigation, but we didn't write the staff report, we just gave the approval for the type of system. I think one of the things that's important to understand, this is more than just a standard advanced wastewater system, it's kind of, in my mind, an advanced wastewater system on steroids, there's double disinfection, there's subsurface drip where we can get a lot of treatment from the earth. This is a development that, as was stated, has been there since the '50s, and they've never done anything to the wastewater system all those years. I'm concerned, and one of the reasons I'm here tonight, is that Sycamore, or the Escondido Creek has been identified as having bacterial pathogens in the creek and exceedances that have been observed at the headwaters that, where it crosses with the ocean. There has also been studies by the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Project, and they have human markers that have been identified in that creek. Now, that doesn't mean that everything came from this development, but it's a good indicator, and they're always pointing their finger at failed septic systems. And I really believe this is the best possible solution to that problem that they have on that piece of land, and we need to be sure that the treatment is put in there and does eliminate them as a source of this contamination, because it puts the city in great liability if we don't.
I'm all in favor of putting in a better treatment system. I'm just trying to figure out, who was the person? Somebody, somebody initially said, I've done all the study, here's where it should go. I've looked at everything. Who, who is that person?
The environmental health specialist for the city, Melinda Talent, and then prior to that was Andrew Sheldon that worked for me at that time.
Okay, no, no, but that's, that's you approving, I, I think that, that you approving submission from somebody else that says, we've looked at this, here's where we think it should go, right? And who was the person that raised their hand first and said, I did the study, this is where I think it should go?
John Eroslawski, their consultant.
Okay. You done? Yeah.
Do you have where the FEMA flood zone is on, on this creek, or do we know that?
Well, the, the new maps didn't consider any kind of creek, so it wouldn't be affected by the new map. I haven't, I personally did not look at the FEMA map for the creek in that area.
So how do we know?
And I'm not even sure there is a flood plain because it's in the Fumaral Creek there.
So we don't know if this is in the, in the flood zone?
I'm sure it's not because it was reviewed by the city's flood plain manager in Public Works and approved.
Okay, any more questions? Okay.
I move approval, staff recommendation.
We actually have some other steps we have to do.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
This whole legal thing, you know, it's really annoying. With that, I'm gonna open the public hearing. We have two speakers. We have Norm Haney, and then we have, oh, we have the applicant team first, but for questions, do you wanna, okay, for questions, and you're there, we see you. Norm, you're up.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. This is an interesting situation because the Regional Water Quality Control Board recently basically changed the setback from a standard 50 feet for a regular septic system to 100 feet. Now, there's no real particular reason for why they did that, they just did it. They could have said 200 feet, they could have said 500 feet. Without consideration of advanced wastewater treatment systems that we have here in the city of Malibu, they're talking about standard septic systems. And as, as Craig said, and Craig's an expert in this, he knows, he knows exactly what's going on here, and to the degree with which effluent is treated to a much, much higher, and we're talking 10 times cleaner than what comes out of a standard septic system. And so this is a benefit to the city of Malibu. And, you know, as, as Craig indicated, there is some liability if we don't approve it. Now, I, I don't have a horse in this race at all, but I do chair the wastewater advisory committee. Now, I don't have a horse in this race at all, but I do chair the wastewater advisory committee. I'm not here speaking for them. But John Yaroslavsky is one of the best wastewater treatment designers in the entire state of California, probably in the country. And he doesn't do anything halfway. If he strongly believes that this is the place it would go, and it's been researched by Public Works, by the Health Department, by Craig personally, and by the geologist, I strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Appreciate it. Does anyone else wish to address us on this issue? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. We're back for discussion or a motion.
I move staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes four nothing. Moving on. This is a fun one. I got to catch some wind to read this one here. Might need a glass of water. Coastal Development number four B coastal development permit amendment numbers one seven dash zero one zero, one seven dash zero one one, one seven dash zero one two, and one seven dash zero one three. An application to amend coastal development permits numbered one seven dash zero one four, one seven dash zero one six, one seven dash zero two six, and one seven dash zero three zero. Wireless communication facility numbers one six dash oh one two, one six dash oh one three, one six dash oh two oh, one six dash oh two two. And site plan reviews number one six dash oh five five, one six dash oh five six, one six dash oh six four, and one six dash oh six seven to revise a condition regarding the frequency of regular maintenance visits, which was continued from November twentieth, and this is for four seven five oh point five Enstel Canyon Road, four five six eight point five Enstel Canyon Road, six zero one five point five Trankis Canyon Road, and six four six eight point five Trankis Canyon Road. May we have a report, please?
Yes, tonight we are looking at the, I believe this is the first four of the Southern California Gas Company advanced meter installation, project installations that you approved several months ago. And all of the ones that you've approved since this first batch have had a condition of approval calling for annual maintenance. These first four had a condition of approval calling for quarterly maintenance. So the purpose of the amendment tonight is just to change the condition for these four to an annual maintenance program. That's just more practical for the applicant and fits with their standard operating procedures. And if you have any other questions, they are here. And otherwise, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Disclosures, anyone? None, none, none?
None.
Questions, anyone?
Yes.
John, do you have a question, John?
Yes, I do. I read somewhere a while ago that the state was taking over permitting of these types of things. Is that true?
I'm not aware of a change like that.
And then the second thing is, can you explain what happens in an inspection?
No, but the applicant is here and would be happy to do that.
Okay, do we have inspections on anything else other than these? Do we do inspect every telephone pole in Malibu?
The city does a final inspection after the installation and then conditions of approval that are standard for all wireless facility applications require maintenance visits by the applicant.
How often?
I believe for like a regular wireless facility, it's a quarterly maintenance visit. This is a public utility. It's a different type of installation, so annual is is the standard.
Okay, and do we do we inspect any telephone poles, not wireless telephone?
Not that I'm aware of.
So they just aren't inspected? Or we don't get any reports?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not.
And and on these particular poles, is there anything on the pole other than their little gizmo?
No.
Okay. Is there any reason a year was picked instead of two or five or ten?
A year is the the falls in what their standard maintenance program for these types of facilities, so that's what we're putting in.
Okay. Did, do you have a question?
I have only just followed one question John asked from the applicant.
Yeah, but he's.
Oh, you want to wait for the app, talk to the app?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have our friend Mike is back for questions and apparently there is a question, so. Good evening, Mike. How are you? Good, good.
My hero for SoCal Gas. I have with me my inspection expert, Jackie Reyes, and so she'll answer all those inspection questions that you have.
Okay, welcome. And Jackie, when we're done, if you wouldn't mind filling one of these out. Oh, you already have it. You're so clever. Okay, yeah, you're a pro. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead. My name's Jackie Reyes and I just wanted to let you know that I'm the site acquisition manager and I've actually been involved with the permitting process since two thousand fifteen.
Okay, my real question is, what do you do when you inspect a pole?
So during our annual inspections, it is visual, so we'll come out to the site itself. We'll just make sure that, you know, that it is, you know, standing straight. We're making sure that there hasn't been any damage done. We have gone out, especially with our wood poles, we do find that sometimes people do tamper with them. And even if it looks like it's maybe, you know, somebody might be tampering with it where they're trying to, you know, maybe cut it or something like that. We immediately replace it. So that's more of a visual thing because, you know, for the pole, our DCUs are actually inspected. Well, not inspected, but they're heavily monitored by our network operations team and they get a daily report. So we know that they're always working. They're always, you know, reading. Again, we check the performance and that again is doing, that's done on a daily basis.
And is there anywhere else in your system where you you have longer than one-year inspections?
No, that was something that was actually brought to us that was also approved by the California Public Utilities Commission when we presented this project. So we do, it is, you know, we find that annual has been, you know, it's been sufficient. We haven't found any problems. You know, again, I mean, we're looking for everything, erosion, anything that can just, you know, possibly, you know, it gets, it's just better to be proactive.
Okay. And you have the advantage, I assume, of knowing if there's a problem in advance generally anyhow. What you're really looking for is something that's decaying or something along those lines. It's, but the unit's still working, so you can't tell.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right, and again, I mean, if there is ever an issue, you know, people do call into the gas company, our one eight hundred number. It is available twenty-four hours, you know, seven days a week, twenty-four hours. Anytime that there is any damage, anything that's been reported, you know, with our polls or data collecting units, they are sent out as an A-one, which is our top priority response time, and those are taken care of within half an hour to forty-five minutes. So if, all they have to do is just call the call center and we immediately come out.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I move staff's recommendation.
Can I close the hearing first?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Would anyone else like to address the commission on this item? Seeing nobody, aye. Close the hearing?
Now I move staff's recommendation.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, passes four to nothing. Thank you too. We very much appreciate you coming down tonight. Thank you. Okay, we are on to number five A coastal development permit number one six dash zero six zero. An application for a new two-story beachfront, single-family residence and associated development at two four three zero zero Malibu Road. May we have a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Next item on the agenda is a coastal development permit for two four three zero zero Malibu Road. The property is located on the south side of Malibu Road in the single-family medium zoning district. It's a vacant parcel that was previously developed with the two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight square foot single-family residence. That residence was demolished in nineteen ninety-nine. The project before you consists of the demolition of the remaining wood retaining walls and concrete footing from the previous single-family residence and construction of a new five thousand six hundred and forty-five square foot two-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. There's a swimming pool and decks, rooftop deck with a spa and mechanical equipment, an uninhabitable understructure mechanical platform, new bulkhead fencing and gates, onsite wastewater treatment system, and a twenty-foot wide view corridor on the east side of the property. The site plan shows a footprint of the proposed development and as proposed, the new single-family residence meets both the structure and the deck string lines of the two nearest neighbors. The property to the east of the subject parcel is vacant, so the string lines were measured from the next adjacent neighbor. The proposed development also meets the ten-foot setback from the nineteen twenty-eight mean-high tide line as determined by the state lands commission. The proposed structure meets the height restrictions pursuant to LIP section three point six for beachfront development. The height of the structure is twenty-three feet as measured from the center line of Malibu Road and twenty-five feet from the ocean side as measured from the recommended finished floor elevation. The project also proposes a view corridor measuring twenty feet wide on the east side of the residence. As the property is a hundred feet in width as measured from Malibu Road, the proposed new view corridor meets LIP section six point five for scenic visual and hillside protection. The property also proposes a new AOWTS that has been sited as landward as possible and in the uninhabitable mechanical platform that is located below the residence, which has been conditioned to have a five-foot ceiling clearance from the lowest structural member to the top of the platform. Staff will be issuing a revised resolution to capture a new public works condition that addresses the new FEMA maps. That'll be issued tomorrow. And with that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution seventeen seventy-three, approving the project as condition. And this concludes my presentation. The owner and the applicant are here for questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Disclosures, please.
Commissioner Pearson and I visited the property with Lester and the applicant. Got a good perspective of what they were doing. I just got to learn why they were using a nineteen twenty-nine or twenty-eight mean-high tide study, which I understand why they're doing that now.
Would you share with us why?
State lands commission requires them to do that. Now, the interesting part was Lester showed me the nineteen forty-six or sixty-five studies. Sixty-five where the mean-high tide line was further back, which is, I didn't understand that. Maybe I'll figure that out at some future point in my life, but that's all I learned.
John?
I drove by the site and I sent and I also requested from Reva a wave uprush study so I could understand how it was determined. I asked if the FEMA maps were used. And I guess we have a, now that's the question I have for you. Well, I'll do that when we do it. That's my disclosure.
Okay, my disclosure, as Steve said, is, well, he covered my disclosure as well, met there with the applicant and Lester and learned about the nineteen twenty-eight or nine mean-high tide line, which was, they're definitely very interesting. And that's it on there. Questions? Jeff?
Mike? Yes, explain a little bit about the revised condition you're going to impose.
Actually, I wanted to clarify that staff would be, we would be changing our recommendation for you to adopt that resolution with this added condition that Rob's going to explain.
The added condition is again.
It's a public works condition related to, go ahead, Rob.
So, yeah, so when we first look at this project, it was approximately a couple of years ago prior to the FEMA revising their maps or even looking at their maps. And now we're looking at it again, being before it came over tonight, we noticed that this project would be affected by the new FEMA maps. We looked at the project and based on what they're proposing now, the new FEMA maps and with this new project, new project would would satisfy all the all the conditions based on the based on the proposed proposed map. It's built up higher than the proposed base flood elevation. It meets all the requirements that way. So previously, the project was out of the FEMA zone and now the new FEMA flood map, that zone is is increased out more towards Malibu Road. So now there's a little bit more requirements like for the applicant to put in an elevation certificate, making sure that's that meets our requirements. So putting putting together a elevation cert is is basically the condition we're going to add.
Yeah, John.
So what you're saying is the new FEMA maps, there was no sea rise here?
No, what I'm saying is that previously the FEMA maps, the boundary for that zone was out more towards the ocean. The proposed development was totally outside of that flood zone. So there wasn't any FEMA regulations or any conditions that we needed to to add to this project. And now the new FEMA maps, since we're applying those to new development projects, the new FEMA zone is changed and now the project is in a flood zone and where there's additional requirements and based on our review, the project meets those requirements.
But my question is, the new FEMA map, does it show a higher sea level than the old map?
Yes, it's, I want to say I'm estimating the old one was probably base flood elevation of fourteen and now this one's at seventeen.
Okay, so that brings me to the question. You did a wave uprush study. If the ocean's three and a half feet higher, doesn't that change the wave uprush study?
Public Works Department doesn't review the wave uprush study.
Well, doesn't that put it into question? Who reviews it?
That would be the our, um, yeah, our coastal engineer.
Did he review this project with a new wave uprush study that matched FEMA's FEMA's heights?
I did talk to Mike about that and he did look at that with the new FEMA map.
So you can chime in, Lester, if you want, but what I don't understand is, I'll be plain about it. We, the last couple houses we've had on Malibu Road, it just so happens that the wave uprush study was just exactly right, so the the bottom floor was flat. There was no drop or raise on the fifty percent towards the ocean. So now we have a FEMA study that comes in and says wave uprush is so-and-so and the recommended bottom floor is so-and-so. But in the meantime, the ocean's raised three and a half feet and that didn't change. That's where I don't understand how it could have no effect if the ocean's that much higher up.
Once again, I don't look at wave uprush study. I look at the project to see if it meets FEMA regulations and I have no involvement with the wave uprush study.
Well, maybe Jessica.
Okay, let me even get to the public hearing. Maybe it'll help answer and then if not, we'll deal with it then. I'm just guessing from the look on Lester's face that maybe you'll have some input there.
Okay.
Any other questions outside that?
Ask Lester.
Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing and we have one speaker. Oh, it's Lester. You have fifteen minutes. You can save time for rebuttal to yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I do anything, I wanted to know where the camera was so I could say hi to Jeff and Mokai. Nice seeing you guys. They're they're clients and they're watching on our live stream, so there you go.
Glasses of wine with them.
I I want to, they had close-up. Nice. I didn't plan on actually saying much, but I'm, see, I'm going to have to add a little bit to what I was going to say at the start. I wanted to make a couple of quick points. One is this house was designed in tandem with the vacant lot house next door. So at the end of the day, I've designed this thing to provide a forty-foot view corridor because I put both twenty-foot view corridors together. So it will be one of the wider view corridors on Malibu Road. One point that wasn't brought up exactly was we kind of got boned by state lands. So when when Jessica says that, you know, we meet our our string line requirements, we meet our string line requirements more than we need to because this nineteen twenty-eight mean-high tide line ruling with the ten-foot setback, we essentially lost our our beachfront decks. tide line ruling with the 10-foot setback, we essentially lost our, our beachfront decks. So, we're even further back than the string lines, you know, would, would allow us to do. I also think when you look at the staff report, it's a relatively quick timeline for this project, okay? So, what that says is that all the agencies did their jobs, all of our consultants did our jobs. We tracked this thing. When there was an issue, we handled it, and that's how you move things through, through the planning process, and you don't have people coming up here saying, you know, it's been three years and blah, blah, blah. So, you know, this, we were good to go in nine months, and we just had to wait that extra three. And part of what Bonnie's talking about with the concurrent submittal thing, you get an extra two or three months, it's all we need to keep everybody happy. So, and John, I'll, I'll talk to you about that concurrent submittal stuff later. It, it's a good thing. And finally, I was just going to say, this is a very clean staff report. You know, we can get out of here early if you want, and I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. I do, I will address, John, I'll address your, your question very quickly. There's separate ways you look at, at how your floor levels have to, have to be set on the beach. FEMA is completely different than a wave uprush study. FEMA has nothing to do with that. FEMA has their engineers in the back room, do whatever it is they do, and they come up with, with two things. The first is, where are those flood zones so that if you're in that flood zone or one of the flood zones, you have to comply with certain FEMA requirements? So, this project was never in the flood zone until October 9th, okay, of this year. We had it approved out of the flood zone. I don't know why we have to redo this, but it's cool because Rob's just saying, so now they got to comply with stuff that their house already complies with. Fine, we'll do a flood certificate elevation. But the point is FEMA sets that elevation, and if I'm, and that has nothing to do with the wave uprush report. Now, to your question of why are the houses recently on the beach becoming level with the road? I actually have a PowerPoint. I'm not going to waste my time on it unless I have to. But the bottom line is, these are not our parents' beach houses anymore. When, when, when people were building houses on Malibu Road and on the Colony, like literally Zubin Maeda's house was on the sand on Malibu Road. And as time has gone on, and, and as regulations have become more and more restrictive, and has, and as design values have become greater and greater for the, for not only what the coastal engineers that we hire that do these site-specific wave uprush studies, not only are those causing the, the height of the flooring to move up and the structure to move up, but now, we're told we have to plan for 100 years in the future. We're not given a value. We, you know, our, our coastal engineer that we hired, in this case, Dave Skelly, made a determination based on the scour and the, and the profile of the, of the, of the beach, et cetera. And as that's happening, structural engineering requirements are forcing what used to be a 12- to 16-inch deep floor system go to four feet in, in thickness. So, when you add all those things up, this is why these beach sides of the houses are getting closer and closer to the road sides of the houses. And, and that's, that's the simple answer. So, at that point, I'm going to reserve my 10 minutes and 19 seconds if I need it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, Norm Hany?
I'll fill out a speaker slip.
Thank you.
Right afterwards. But one of the commissioners asked a question, and I've been very much involved in this, this FEMA issue and the new maps. I, I had a project on a, a beachfront property, and there, there was a line. On one side of the line, the floodplain was elevation 17. On the other side of the line, and I'm, I'm talking about a line, right? This, this big. On the other side, the elevation was 13. Now, I'm saying that because the FEMA maps don't make any sense at all. Also, if you ask them, did you take sea level rise into consideration? Answer, no. Our wave uprush, rush engineers, whether it's Mr. Scully, or Mr. Weiss, or Mr. Brown, they are experts, and it's their signature on the plan that they're liable for. So, they do take hot, sea level rise into effect, and basically, they consider a storm surge at high tide and the highest potential breaking wave. You can build two feet above that. That's the safe zone. And it does end up being between 17 and 19 feet along Malibu Road. And I would trust their work, which they have been doing for, Weiss has been in it for 40 years, way above FEMA's maps. When you ask them how they came up with it, they won't give you the numbers. So, sometimes it's way high, sometimes it's way low, and it's hard to figure out. But it, to my knowledge, it doesn't have very much to do with logic. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Do you wish to rebut his support of your position?
Wrong.
I'll take those notes. Anyone else want to address the commissioner on this item? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. We're back here for discussion and/or motion.
I'd like to ask Lester some questions.
Please, go ahead.
And maybe staff could answer this. My dilemma here is, I understand you got approved, or you were done in, it changed in October, and this is only a couple of months later.
Yes.
But as I understand it, we're instructed by the city, the city council to follow the new FEMA maps. And the new FEMA maps, as you stated, say the ocean's three feet higher, 100 years from now, or whatever it is. Can you explain to me why a wave that starts out three feet higher ends up in the same place when it uprushes?
I don't understand your question, but I, what I want to say is FEMA says that we have to have our floor level higher than elevation 17, the new maps, okay? Our floor level is 26. There, what's the, there's no, there's no real issue here.
So, what, what does, Bonnie, you can answer this. What does the code say about where you can have your bottom floor?
The code talks about two separate things. It talks about meeting the floodplain elevation, which would be based on the FEMA maps, and then separately, it talks about the wave uprush elevation. So, they are two different things.
Right.
And so, you have to meet the more restrictive, meaning the higher one.
And is 13 feet higher than the beach elevation?
There's also a, I'm sorry, there, there's also a second part of the, of the wave uprush requirements. The code talks about minimum finished floor elevation, but the wave uprush study really is based on the lowest horizontal member. So, the number that we're really concerned about is the lowest horizontal member, and then, we work with our structural engineer to decide, you know, what thickness of floor we're, we're going to have to have. Because you also have to remember now, John, we used to have 10-inch diameter wood piles on these houses, okay? Then, we had 12-inch concrete, then, we had 24-inch concrete, now, we have 48-inch concrete. This house has 36-inch diameter concrete piles. You get too many of those in a row, you have a seawall, a de facto seawall. You have to spread them out, and when you spread them out, the beams that span across there get deeper. This is why we have a four-foot structural system there.
You're saying your floor is four feet thick?
I'm saying my floor is 14 inches thick, and my beams below it are three feet thick.
Okay.
And that's my, that's my structural engineer. I didn't like make that up.
But how does that relate to the elevation of the finished floor?
The bottom of that three-foot beam is at elevation 22, okay? That's what the wave uprush study, not the FEMA maps. The wave uprush study says my bottom beam has, is, it cannot be lower than elevation 22. So, 22 plus four is 26.
Okay, now, if the new FEMA maps say the ocean's three feet higher, why isn't that 25 feet?
The, the 22 is 100 years higher, John.
Right.
So, I don't care what FEMA says today. We had the design for 100 years from now, and nobody knows where it's going to be.
But you based, what I'm asking is, you based your design on the old sea level?
No, we based our design on the wave uprush study and didn't care about FEMA because we were out of the flood zone.
But did you care about the new FEMA determination of where this?
I designed this house in, in March of 2016.
Right.
So, I did not care about the new FEMA maps in March of 2016.
I'm not talking about the maps. I'm talking about, okay, what assumption did you use for sea level rise? And does that map, does that correspond with FEMA's assumption for sea level rise?
I can't answer that because like Norm said, FEMA won't tell us what they based anything on. I do know that we worked with Dave Skelly. He provided his report. It's 20 pages of charts and diagrams that have, like, Greek symbols all over them. It also, it also went to Mike Phipps and came back with four pages of comments, corrections, which Skelly, you know, complied with and responded to so that Mike signed it off. What I get at the end of the day is I get a section with a beach profile and a bunch of lines saying, this can't go below this, this can't go below this, this can't go below that, and the conclusion on the report. And, and that's how we designed.
So, so it was just coincidental that the finished floor height on the first 50% of the building was 26.33, and that the finished floor height on the seaward side was 26.33?
Yes.
That's coincidental?
Yes.
Okay. That surprises me. But, okay, now, my second question is, and maybe this is, I should ask staff, but one of the conditions says there should be no further enhancements of the seawall, period. And you have to certify that. The second condition is, one of the other conditions is the proposed design of the seawall shall be amenable to, to adaption strategies.
So, what the, the first condition you mentioned, that's a requirement that the property owner recorded deed restrictions, saying that they won't enhance the seawall or make any other improvements that extend more seaward than the existing sea, the approved seawall.
Does it say that in the condition?
Yeah, that's, it's all about not extending the seaward footprint, but if, if an adaptation strategy, for example, caught, called for it to go higher underneath the house or extend the return walls more landward or something like that, that would, that would not violate that condition.
It's called reentrant. I learned that when I talked to Lester also. Thank you.
Now, but the, and that's, that's fine with the LCP. And I hate to grill you on this, but it's, it's just so happens.
No, you don't.
That I, no, that I drive down Malibu Road fairly frequently, and the distance of the road to the ocean changes.
Okay.
And it just so happens that we just get a lot of these houses lately that just happen to be exactly lined up. And so, in your case, I guess it's a coincidence, but in all cases, it can't be. So, I just hope staff, when they come back with the next one that's flat, it better be exactly the height of his house.
John, some, let me tell you something else. This, this whole FEMA thing has caused me to, to really try to understand wave uprush more than just my little glib thing about I get a section and I'm off and running. I, I really did try to understand this thing, and one of the things I couldn't, I can't believe is that the city council went and hired Moffett Nichols to fight this FEMA thing and didn't hire the four local coastal engineers and maybe throw a couple of the architects in that know the, the implications of this stuff. Because what, what I have found, if you really walk the beach at different times of day and year and look at these tides, like, I was doing this 1928 thing, and I spent a lot of time out at this particular site to really try to understand what was a 4.5 tide, which is, which is what state lands uses now. 4.5 is the mean-high tide line for that, and, you know, and, and what is eight, you know, when it, when 100 years comes from now? It, every site is different, and every site is different at different times of the year with different sand configurations and, and things like that, and you know that because you're a surfer.
Sure.
But the point is to try to actually say with precision what's going to happen, when and where, it, it's impossible. So, when you're asking people to spend a million dollars on a foundation, okay, and you're warning them that the sea is rising, and if it goes too low, it's going to get trashed, and they're buying FEMA flood insurance, and it's only good for $250,000, and it only, and it won't count for seawalls, they're going to put the house as high as, as the wave uprush engineer says they can put it. It's that simple.
No, I understand that.
So, you know, don't get mad at me and the other architects.
No, I'm not mad at you.
Get mad at the regulatory agencies.
There's means to my madness, and that is that we had some complaints on some houses we had built, we approved before, that they were towering over their neighbors. And because the neighbors were old. But they all just happened to have flat floors, and, and when you looked at it real closely, it looked like maybe the wave uprush study was fit to the number. And that's what I don't want to see happening, is, is that happening. So, in the future, I'm, I'm all for your house, fine. In the future, I'm going to see if it's 26.33, and, and the front half is exactly 26.33, or maybe theirs will be 72, or 22.11, you know?
Why wouldn't they design it to that since they know the number already, though?
Because they want it flat. The, the first, the first is the level of the road, the first 50% of the house.
No, I got it, but if that's the number that works with all the regulatory agencies, why wouldn't they just pick that number and then you'll be surprised again?
Because it has nothing to do with wave uprush, where the road is. Zero. Okay, that's all my questions.
Okay, I think we are.
Already closed the public hearing, as I remember.
Yeah, let's make sure that we have a good understanding of what the, the new condition, is it one condition, Rob? Just that they get a flood, what is it, special flood hazard certificate?
It's, it's a flood elevation certificate. Yeah.
So, it's the standard condition for getting a flood elevation certificate? Is that clear enough for everybody?
Have, have we used it before?
It's, it's on all projects that are in the FEMA flood zone. They have to get that, that elevation cert.
Yes, there's a standard condition for that.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion to approve the project with the addition of the standard FEMA certificate requirement.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, wait, hang on, hang, hold.
Is that the same amendment that staff is proposing, or is this different?
No, that's the same one.
Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Yurin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And applause ring out. Boy, we don't get applause much anymore.
Lester, I hope your client buys the Mokai Ranch and you build 100 houses.
Item 5B. Coastal Development Permit Number 08-028. Variance Number 08-019, 16-005, 16-034, and 16-035. And Site Plan Reviews Number 08-009 and 17-048. An application for a new single-family resident and associated development at 31535 and a half Pacific Coast Highway and properties which contain portions of a private driveway including 31499, 31505, 31533, 31535, 31537, 31539, 31541, and 31543 Pacific Coast Highway, which are not within the appealable coastal zone. May we have a report, please?
Yes, good evening, Chair Pearson and Commissioners. I have put up a vicinity aerial map that has a blow-up aerial of the project. The subject property is outlined in green where a new two-story, single-family residence is proposed. The proposed, proposed project is in a residential neighborhood. It's accessed from Pacific Coast Highway by a shared private driveway. It is a steep and narrowly paved driveway within a larger 40-foot wide easement. The proposed project includes a single-family residence with an attached garage and a second unit, as well as associated development. Due to the project's setting, including the hillside topography, the proximity to environmentally sensitive habitat area, the application includes several discretionary requests, each of which I will go over in our staff's presentation. This is the overall site plan. The property lines for the property are depicted in purple. The stream, which is our environmentally sensitive habitat area, is shown in blue. The access easement from which the property takes access is outlined in yellow, and the proposed firewall to mitigate impacts to ESHA from fuel modification is shown in red. The applicant has proposed a variance to allow the required fuel modification of the proposed residence to extend into proposed residence to extend into ESHA. The building itself is not located within ESHA or the ESHA drainage course. However, the fire department's required fuel modification encroaches within the 100-foot buffer of the unmapped drainage course, which is shown in yellow. Based upon the size and shape of the lot, it is infeasible for the project to avoid all impacts to the sensitive habitat area. The project was reviewed by the Environmental Review Board and the city biologist and has been designed in condition to minimize disruption of the sensitive habitat area. One of the requirements from the Environmental Review Board was that a 138-foot-long, six-foot-high fire block wall be set at the top of the canyon immediately on the west side of the project. The revised fuel mod plan with the firewall and the oak trees has been reviewed and approved by the fire department and the city biologist. And the firewall has no further impacts on ESHA because the wall is located within the fuel modification zone of the residence and requires no fuel modification itself. The project cannot be developed with, without providing fire department-approved fuel modification and the project cannot be developed without the proposed variance. This is an enlarged view of the development area. The city biologist reviewed the project and the project plans and the biological assessment and determined that with conditions to minimize disruption, disruption of the habitat values to less than significant, that the project would be limited to a 10,000-square-foot development area. The slide illustrates the development areas approved by the city biologist. The fire department turnaround access and, and the fuel modif, the fire department turnaround and access is not calculated within the 10,000-square-foot development area. The firewall was not required to be included within the 10,000-square-foot development area since it was added as an additional mitigation measure in addition to the 10,000-square-foot pad limitation. The lot is bound, is bounded on the east side by two and a half to one in steeper slopes, as indicated by the red and purple on the slide. The applicant has proposed a variance to construct on these steep slopes for the onsite driveway and a portion of the retaining wall associated with the fire department hammerhead turnaround and the firewall at the top of the canyon on the west side of the residence. Those areas are identified on the slide by the orange dash circle. The construction of one-to-one transition slopes is also proposed at the driveway entrance, which is shown in orange circle at the top of the slide. This is necessary to tie the grading into the existing slope. The project cannot be developed without providing emergency vehicle access in the onsite driveway. Therefore, the project cannot be developed without the proposed variance. The applicant has proposed a variance to allow 50% reduction of the required side yard setback. On the east side, a 12.5 side yard setback is proposed while a 25 side yard setback is required. The setback is being taken from the edge of the access easement. The reduction is due to the lot's constraints, including the steep slopes and the access easement that traverses the property, as well as the environmental sensitive habitat area to the west and the canyon on the west. The house has been sited as far east on the lot as feasible in order to locate it as far away from sensitive habitat area as possible while also trying to minimize encroachment on variance slopes and into the access easement. The applicant has also requested a site plan review to construct a portion of the residence and to construct retaining walls on slopes that are three to one from, to two and a half to one, as indicated in green on the slide, to accommodate the onsite driveway and the hammerhead turnaround. Story poles were placed on site in April of 2017 to demonstrate location, height, and bulk of the proposed project and aid in the visual analysis of potential private and public view impacts. The story polls at that time demonstrated that the north elevation projected into the primary view of the northerly residence at 31535 Pacific Coast Highway. Accordingly, the applicant redesigned the project to reduce those sections of the residence to 18 feet in height. The story polls were modified on August 29th, 2017 to reflect the revised project. As shown in the photo on the bottom right-hand corner, the southerly areas of the residence, which remain greater than 18 feet in height, are not expected to impact primary views as the story polls could not be seen in the, from my site visit and as shown in the photograph. This is a cross-section just illustrating the portion of the residence that was reduced, which is shown in the, the bubble cloud. I have included site photos from Pacific Coast Highway, also illustrating that the project will not be substantially visible from public viewing areas. Staff has received public correspondence and opposition to this project. They have raised concerns regarding primary view impacts, the width and steepness of the shared driveway that serves the lot, the requested variances, the proposed square footage, privacy, the second residential unit, increased drainage, and geotechnical hazards. Responses to these concerns have been discussed in the agenda report. Staff has also received correspondence today regarding further concerns about the access easement and work occurring within the easement. The grading and drainage plant illustrate that a portion of the proposed grading is located within the 40-foot-wide easement, which is identified in orange in this slide, for road utilities and incidental purposes. And no greater quantity of water is proposed to be drained towards the road that currently occurs. The Public Works Department is here to answer any further questions related to grading Before I conclude my presentation, I'd like to make a correction. The staff report indicates that the total development square footage is 5,548 square feet, which is correct. However, in the two-thirds rule calculation, there was a slight error in the area that is less than 18 feet. It was stated that the area is 4,563 square feet. That incorrectly had taken into consideration some areas, covered areas that were less than four feet in depth. So they should not have counted towards development square footage. So that number should read 4,431 square feet. It does not affect the two-thirds rule. They are still fine with the two-thirds rule. The applicant has submitted an updated cover sheet A 0.00, which will be slip-sheathed into your plans, as well as an updated sheet A 2.07, where the erroneous information was included on the plans. So that information will now be corrected. And I think, and that concludes staff's presentation. The required findings can be made that the project complies with the local coastal program and the Malibu municipal code. And staff is recommending approval of this project, subject to the conditions of approval contained in Planning Commission Resolution Number 17-69. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also here for, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Commissioners disclosures, Jeff?
Yes, I visited the site with Commissioner Pearson and the architect gave us a very good perspective of what they were trying to do up there. Talked about the issues of the steepness of the road and making sure that it was open in case any emergency vehicles had to go through. So I, I got a good perspective of what they were doing.
I did send a question to staff by email on the difference in the two-thirds rule calculation and a question about whether you can build a structure in an ESHA. But I did not visit the site.
Okay, as Steve said, I visited the site. We met with the architect and along with what Steve said, just visiting the location was, was handy because it is a unique, it's a unique location, that's for sure. It is one of the probably steeper roads in Malibu, so it, it creates some interesting challenges, I'm sure. And really useful to visit a site like that because it is an interesting one, that's for sure. And, but I think Mr. Uring covered everything. Questions, Jeff?
I have one question that, about the easement. Does the applicant own the underlying fee and other people have an easement across it? Or do they all have easements over some underlying fee that's owned by somebody completely, you know, otherwise and not involved in this case? What's, what's the status of that, of that, of the title to that property underlying the easement?
I'm checking if I actually have the easement. But like in this particular case, on this property, the property, as shown on the survey, the easement traverses the property. So in this case, this property would be burdened or would have granted an easement to the other properties. I don't see it listed as a parcel.
Okay, so he, so the applicant then under, owns the underlying fee? Okay, thank you.
Steve?
I was just going to say, I was just going to add that the other thing I got out of the site visit was perspective of the other houses on the street, which I thought was going to be very helpful.
John?
Stephanie, can you put up the, one of the color-coded slope things that shows the plot plan? There's two, there you go. Well, let me see. No, can you put up the other one? It's got the firewall on it.
You want the overall site plan?
Yeah, it's in color.
Is, that, that's the overall site? Does that help?
Yeah, okay. Now, if you combine those two, the, the slope analysis in that one, the red line is the, the red line's the firewall, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is as steep as that. So why is the firewall pushed down the canyon instead of, in ESHA, instead of on the edge of the ESHA here?
I'm sure the applicant can speak more to that, but the intent was in working with the fire department to establish a firewall, which would be a fire break, which would help mitigate the fire coming up and lapping up at the house. So that would have been done in consultation with the fire department as to what the ideal location would be to meet the intent of keeping the fire from lapping up that canyon towards the residence. So that distance would have been established with the applicant and the fire department.
So the fire department, basically what you're saying is they said halfway down the hill, the wall's better than up at the top? Doesn't?
You know what I'll say? When you're there, it's not halfway down the hill. It, it, maybe it looks like it there, but when, when you were there, it, it's down a little bit, but it's, it, it goes a lot further. It really doesn't look that way when you're there.
Okay. And then, I know this is part of the fuel modification, the wall, but doesn't the LCP say that you can have the only use in a, there can be no structures in an ESHA? That the only use for an ESHA can be a trail? A public trail?
Well, the way, the wall is actually going to be in within the Zone A of the house. So basically, once it went to the Environmental Review Board and it was determined that the wall was not located within ESHA, it is within the Zone A fuel modification of the house and it does not require a fuel modification. So for that reason, when we wrote up the variance findings for fuel modification within ESHA, we didn't write it up to say the fuel modification and the firewall within ESHA because the firewall is not within ESHA. The fuel modification extends down the slope towards into the drainage, into the stream.
Below the firewall?
Yes, correct.
So there would be no requirement to have a variance for construction of that wall?
No, based upon my meeting at the Environmental Review Board and with the city biologist, it didn't appear that it would be necessary to include a variance for the firewall.
Thank you.
I'll just confirm, it doesn't look that way visually either. I know, I was just waiting for you to go for a while. Okay. I am going to open the public hearing. We have a number of speakers, starting with the applicant team. You have 15 minutes, as you probably know, and you may reserve time for rebuttal. Yes, there are other speakers.
I will speak for just shy of probably 13 minutes and reserve the last two for rebuttal. Good evening Planning Commissioners, Malibu staff, and audience members. My name is Laura Hanson and I am the designer of this new single-family home at 31535 and a half Pacific Coast Highway. Let me start by saying I've been working on this property for 10 years with three different families and it is a very challenging site. But from the beginning, I saw the potential in this beautiful land and made it my mission to design the most exquisite home that notches into the hillside, maximizes views, minimizes environmental impact, and respects the neighborhood. And as someone who has designed homes in the city of Malibu for over 20 years, I do my best to avoid any variances or discretionary approvals. But as you will hear in my presentation, the site is unbuildable without them. Stephanie Arhaner, our planner, pointed out in her presentation that this is an infill project, meaning there are existing homes both above and below the property. Some date back to 1962 while others were built as recently as 2012. In keeping with the development pattern, I have located the home as close to the shared access road as possible, which also minimizes the view impact on the homes above. This is why we are asking for the variance to reduce the side yard setback by 50% from the required 25 feet to 12 feet 6 inches. By doing so, we also keep the development further from the ESHA on the west side of the property, which we are not building in, but that our fuel modification zone will touch. This triggering the ESHA setback variance, which is unavoidable. Please note that if we measure the side setback from the east property line, it complies. It is only when it is measured from the edge of the easement that this variance was required. The other three variances requested for the property are also unavoidable. In order to access the site, you have to cut into the existing one-to-one slope that is on the side of the access road, which we have easement rights to grade in. And in order to feather that cut, we must create one-to-one slopes that blend into the existing conditions. To construct the driveway and the mandatory fire department turnaround, we must build retaining walls on small portions of these steep slopes. Also note that this variance covers the building of a firewall on the west canyon side of the property, which was requested at the Environmental Review Board hearing in April. This wall will serve not only to protect my client's home, but potentially the surrounding homes as well in the event of a fire. I urge the commissioners to please grant these requests because denying them renders the lot unbuildable. I know that neighborhood character is called into question when applying for a site plan review, so by using Table 2, Surrounding Land Uses, which was in your staff report, I averaged the size of the eight homes that share the same access road from PTH and determined that the size of the proposed home is within reason. The home is also 799 square feet under the maximum allowable development for the lot size per the LCP standards. Also note that the home does not, excuse me, does not have any basement areas, which most developments utilize, the 1,000-square-foot basement exemption. The average home size is 4,209 square feet and our home is only 3,802 square feet. When you add the accessory unit of 898 square feet, it increases to 4,700 square feet, which is just 491 square feet over the average. But keep in mind that of the eight homes, only one has a second dwelling unit totaling 750 square feet, which was the maximum allowed at the time it was built. I know this because I was the designer of that property as well. And also consider the importance of an accessory unit for the economic diversity of the city. When you build smaller units that can be rented legally, you allow someone of less economic means to live in an area they could otherwise not afford. The state of California is a strong proponent of such units and passed Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069 to respond to the housing demand, encouraging homeowners to build such units on their properties, even going so far as to allow garage conversions. I hope Malibu recognizes the importance of providing second units as viable housing options in its community and I applaud my clients for including one in the design of their home. The first site plan review we are requesting is to build up to 24 feet high with a flat roof. This is only for a small portion of the home, as you can see in zoning conformance Table 3, under the two-thirds rule requirement. Of the total development square footage, only 1,117 square feet is over 18 feet in height, when we were allowed as much as 2,969 square feet. This is just 37. This is just thirty-seven percent of what is allowed. We have also reduced the height to eighteen feet over the garage, which is where the second unit is located, resulting in a seven-foot-six-inch ceiling height on a portion of the entry level, and only an eight-foot ceiling height for the entire second floor over the garage. This was recently revised after the neighbor above made a primary view determination once the story poles were erected. When the city planner, planner visited the property, a very small part of the original design was visible from their home. Upon learning that, and to accommodate the neighbor's concern, I reduced the height of the accessory unit by over two feet, so that they no longer can see the proposed project from their home. And note that the highest point of the residence proposed is now three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-two-five feet above sea level, and that the building pad of the neighbor, neighbor above is at roughly three-hundred-and-forty-five feet, which is a difference of sixteen-point-seven-five feet. Please also note that the portion of the home that is over eighteen feet is on the south side of the building, on the downslope, with a maximum height of three-hundred-and-twenty-three-point-five feet, which is four-point-seven-five feet lower than the maximum height of the structure. So, denying the site plan review of twenty-four feet in no way reduces view impact on the surrounding neighbors and would just result in an increased building footprint that has more impact on the site. The second site plan review requested is for building on slopes three-to-one to two-and-a-half-to-one. This is only necessary for the construction of the driveway with the mandatory fire department turnaround and its associated retaining walls. I have taken very careful measures to make sure that the home's location takes advantage of the flattest part of the site in the four-to-one-to-three-to-one category, as you can see in Figure Three of the color-coded slope analysis. I know there are neighbors who are objecting to the development of this property and are concerned about the safety of their property. But in my opinion, the development of this property will actually increase the safety for the surrounding neighbors. Because we are building the required fire department hammerhead turnaround, in the event of a fire emergency, the firefighters will have better access to the canyon on the west, where fire is likely to travel. We are also planting four oak trees as a fire break and building a hundred-and-thirty-foot-long fire block wall on the west side of the property, which will also prevent the spread of flames. In addition, the property will be irrigated and the home sprinkled, which is a much safer neighbor than an undeveloped site. The fire department also stipulated in their approval that my clients increase the pavement to twenty feet on the entire access road leading from PCH where it is possible and where no grading would be required. I will now respond to the letters that the neighbors wrote to the city included in the staff report and wish to express appreciation to them for noting potential problems the development might have caused. In a joint letter received on the evening of October sixteenth, our original planning commission hearing date, Mr. Bindra, the neighbor above, and Mr. Chu, the neighbor below, expressed opposition to the grading proposed on the shared access road and the small area just north of the property line on Mr. Bindra's land. However, both of these contested areas are addressed in the easement agreement that runs with the land, recorded on June thirtieth, two thousand and three, between the above property and my clients. It clearly states in Item D, which you have a copy of, I believe in your report, quote, "Granters and grantees contemplate that the development of the lower lot will include placement of a driveway as close as possible to the portion of the common boundary line separating the upper and lower lots. This grant of easement is contained herein, 'The right to grade a portion of the slope which lies on the upper lot in a manner as such to facilitate the placement of the driveway serving the lower lot, entirely upon the lower lot, but as close as possible to the portion of the common boundary separating the upper and lower lots,' end quote." As you can see on the grading plan, this is exactly how the driveway and fire department turnaround were designed and is completely legal. Their letter also complained that the size of the home was too large and reducing it would reduce the amount of grading. But this logic is flawed, as we all know, the size of the fire department turnaround is fixed at seventy feet by fifty feet by twenty feet, and does not vary based on the size of the house. The driveway and turnaround are where almost half of the grading occurs. The houses only accounts for twenty percent, a mere three-hundred-and-fifty-six cubic yards, which is exempt. Regardless of the size of the home, the amount of grading would virtually remain the same, and we are well within the allowable cubic yardage per LCP standards at only six-hundred-and-fifty cubic yards. If we were stipulated to reduce the size of the home, my clients would be forced to create a basement to take advantage of the one-thousand-square-foot exemption afforded them in the development standards, thus substantially increasing the amount of dirt being exported. This is certainly not our preference, as I explained in my introduction, my design notches into the hillside as opposed to carving it out. Mr. Bindra also expressed concern for the potential of a landslide, which was addressed by both GeoConcepts, our soils consultant, and the City of Malibu Geotechnical Review of the project. Both found no such danger. In a letter dated October twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, the consultant wrote, quote, "It is the opinion of this corporation, based on the subsurface data, the proposed project will be safe from landslide, settlement, or slippage, and will not adversely affect the adjacent property," end quote. The adjacent property owners and the previous owner of the property, Shoban Paul, who's the neighbor across the way to the east, are worried about the drainage of the property. However, the development of the site will actually improve the drainage, since the public works department requires all of the runoff from the house to be captured and retention take known as a sewer sum. Our civil engineer, Mary Widman, who prepared the approved grading and drainage plans, explained in a letter on October thirteenth, quote, "All of the runoff from the proposed development will be infiltrated into a sewer sum location located at the southerly side of the proposed development. It will outlet toward the southwest side of the development, directing the water towards the existing canyon to the west. A minimum amount of water at the entrance driveway within the limits of the forty-foot-wide easement will sheet flow towards the existing access road, creating a minimum amount of runoff that will not overflow or harm the properties down the stream," end quote. And as for the concerns regarding traffic along the road during construction, the City of Malibu will not issue a building permit until the required fire department turnaround is installed and signed off by the fire department. This means that when the construction of the home begins, we will already have our own parking areas and private turnaround, so that trucks will not need to turn around at the top of the road. Lastly, we heard concerns that the property might be used for a drug rehab facility, which the owner, Rajiv Julipet, will speak to and assure the commissioners that this is truly their dream home. They are eager to begin the building process and become a part of the Malibu community. I strongly urge the commissioners to allow them that opportunity. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. You have two minutes and forty-three seconds left. Does, uh, do you wish to speak now? Okay.
I'd like to thank, uh, City of Malibu and Planning Commission for giving me an opportunity to speak as the potential owner, and hopefully I can build a home here. I was expecting my wife would join, she said when we got married that she'll be through thick and thin, and somehow she's abandoning me right now, but that's okay. But I'm really happy to be here, because I come from India, and I believe, uh, it's, it's amazing that we have this kind of system where you can have here opposing. So, I'm very glad that I have the kind of neighbors, because they're gonna protect my rights, I think. And whether it's logical or not, in my case. So, the next thing is regarding the drug rehab, which Laura mentioned, we absolutely, I had no clue what even that was. You know, all I thought was my daughter, sixteen-year-old daughter, ambition to have this house, and she was, uh, twenty-eighteen, she's joining school at Pepperdine, and that's all I could think of. I mean, none of these occurred, and now I hear all these terms, and I didn't know all this. Maybe I was naive over a lot of these, so I apologize for my naivety. And the next thing is basically that, you know, this is our dream home, this is my daughter's thing. She comes here like surfing, and we come here all the time to Zuma Beach and things like that, and that's simple as reason, that it is not even for me, I know how long I'll live, or my wife, it is purely for my daughter, is why we did this thing. We made a very honest effort to meet the neighbors several times and had a conversation with them. As Laura mentioned, we had gone through a lot of things, we reduced the height of things, and we'd done an earnest thing. But sometimes you hear terms such as like buyout, appeal, deterrent, and I work in these artificial intelligence systems, so I capture these keywords very well. So, um, so these buyout and appeal and deterrent and attorney and unequivocally will not let something get built, let alone a three-thousand-square-feet or even five-square-feet. So, that's how we kind of heard. I know a lot of people have a lot of extensive real estate portfolio. This just happens to be our home. We live on a home here in West Hills, and, uh, we, we just wanna move here, that's all. We don't have extensive portfolio. And I think we also address concern, Mr. Bindra, for instance, he's older gentleman, and we have similar thing, my dad died of stageful lymphoma last year, and I have age parents too. So, I think we all understand the concerns of health and things like that, and how you should have a turnaround, and how in emergency we could, we very empathize, and we, you know, we, we are impacted by the same thing as anybody else. And, uh, so we got all the experts to weigh in on stuff, we got everybody. I'm not an expert in things, we got the experts to weigh in. And most importantly, I'm a tech entrepreneur, I think I'll enhance the value, and I've created jobs in LA, and I hope that, uh, you know, I enhance the value and improve the property values, that's my thing, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, next we have, uh, Shubham Paul? Followed by Ben Bindra and Dave Bindra. Okay, I can't quite hear you, just come on up. Okay, who are you?
I'm Ben Bindra.
Okay, Ben. It's fine.
Hi. Longtime viewer, first-time speaker, thank you for having me, uh, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Now, I've heard the arguments of the builders, and while I love the tone of what they're saying, what they're saying is absolutely false. While they have met with us, they have never once conceded to our demands, forcing us to go through the bureaucratic process in order to enact the slightest change. Truth of the matter is, they are not making this neighborhood safer, they are making it much more dangerous. For the past three years, this neighbor has not cleared the brush in their area, despite a massive drought we've just gone through, and despite ferocious winds and a low-rain winter season. Aside from this, these story poles have barely been able to stay up for a week. This is not a builder I trust, this is not someone who respects me the same way I respect him. I respect that this is his dream home, but if that dream comes at the cost of my family's safety, then I have to argue against it. The fact of the matter is, the easement he seeks would prevent us from expanding and fixing the road in the future. This is a road in desperate need of repair. As you have all gone in the site and visited, you have seen, it is full of potholes, it is barely twenty feet wide. If a single car is on that road, it is nearly impossible for another car to pass. Now, ordinarily, this would be a nuisance, but my father has a heart condition. And if that road is blocked a matter of seconds, is, is a major difference between surviving a heart attack and permanent brain damage. Now, there's also the matter of the drainage. This drainage has been offset from interfering into Escha lands to go down on the road. But as I've mentioned before, this is a threadbare road. Further erosion with drainage will just make this an even more threadbare road. And we can't have that. Our lifeline is that road. Not to mention, there's also the fact that this property is asking for this long elaborate Christmas list of easements. But the truth of the matter is, are you willing to sacrifice the sanctity of an Escha land? The very brand of Malibu as a place that is considered a sanctuary for the environment for the sake of just someone developing their dream home? How many more McMansions do we need in Malibu? And how much more can you endanger the safety of my family? I'd also like to call attention to the letter submitted this afternoon. Please, I hope you read it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dave Bindra? Or Paul, or Shoban Paul, either one? Who are you, sir?
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Shoban Paul. I've been in Malibu since nineteen eighty-seven, trying to age gracefully. I haven't been to city hall for about seven years. Okay, all right, anyway, uh, a question that Commissioner Jennings asked, and which was incorrectly answered, if I may say so, he does not own the fee on the easement. There are few easements out there. In fact, one easement is owned by three-one-five-three-five PCH is the fee owner. He has an ingress egress easement on it, a road easement on it, and that clearly states that he has to maintain insurance, he has to indemnify the owner and so forth, he has done nothing. There has been no insurance in place for now many, many years, and this owner's been there for a few years, and he hasn't even cut the brush. He's a nice guy, by the way, but I don't think I was able to impress upon him that Malibu's a fairly unsafe place, and keep the brush clear, and things can turn very fast. Okay, the other thing is, the city sends us a nice letter that we can join him in the grading. But how do you join a person who doesn't want to join? And if he builds the way he's building, the problem is, no one else is going to be able to expand the road in that direction towards his house, it cannot be, it's, it'll be done. And there are many people who have the easement over there. Most of the land on which the road is belongs to me, but other people have the easement, even some of my other properties have easements. And that means it's going to be stuck like that. And then, one of the big fallacies I heard today was, oh, they will have their own fire truck turnaround. And then, so there'll be no impact on it. Before they get the fire truck turnaround, they have to export two-thousand-plus cubic yards of dirt. As an engineer, what does that tell me? That tells me about eight cubic yards per truck. That tells me two-hundred-and-fifty trucks. That tells me about twenty-minute a truck. That tells me five-thousand minutes, okay? So, imagine in a grading season, that road is going to be closed down for five-thousand minutes divided by sixty, okay? It comes to about eighty-point-some hours, my brain is getting slow as I get old, okay? But that means, over whatever two months' time, the road is going to be closed about twenty-five percent of the time. Two cars cannot go on that road right now. If you have been there, you saw it, period. Now, there's a letter written by an attorney, which I think is very compelling, all right, which he describes the different rules that come into play. I think, if you people get a chance to read that, it's great. I think you should encourage the person to sit down with us and really work with us genuinely. First issue is keep everyone alive, including him and his people. I've seen trucks going down, I've seen a truck going down that canyon, that road is so narrow. Okay, I, I hope you give me a minute or two more to talk, because there are some important issues.
I, you know what, I have to, should have the same time for everybody.
Okay.
But we did read the letter, just so you know.
Oh, you read the letter?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, Dave Bindra?
Good evening. I know it's been a long evening for all of you, and you wanna go home, but I just wanna say a few words. Yes, I'm Dave Bindra, I own that house. And, um, before anything else, I just wanna say a few things which are off the menu here, but anyway, yes. I am Dave, and I'm from India. The only reason I say that is because I lost everything a long time ago here in this country, because anybody who sees a turban and just thinks is somebody, a Sikh or Muslim from Middle East. Just wanted to clarify, just for a, uh, quick minute, no. I'm a Sikh from India, not a Sikh from Middle East. But not that it matters, because all of you seem to be very well-aware people who know the difference, or even if you don't, you don't care. As long as I'm an okay guy, you're okay with that. On the personal level, yes, I landed in the best country that God ever created, United States. And when I came here, uh, my first girlfriend took, brought me to Malibu. Couple of times I came here, and then I said, you know something? This is where I'm gonna buy a house. This is a beautiful place. Okay, it took me forty years, but yes, I finally did. Just my dream house, that I finally bought it. The thing is, like my son just said, that I have a heart situation. And my biggest fear is that the house where we are is so narrow that, that thing that goes up there, that if my situation is so serious that I, I walk around with a bottle of nitro in my pocket. Meaning if something comes up, I gotta put those pills under my tongue. But if something like that comes up, that thing is so narrow that if there's something, construction going on, then there's no way with all the construction vehicles and everything that emergency vehicles can get up there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Really, after 40 years of my dream home to come through, that, that I have to die because the ambulance can't get to me.
Thank you. We understand and your time is up, I'm afraid.
All right, I'm sorry. Thank you.
We got the message.
I hope you consider that.
Okay, all right.
Of course.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has not addressed the commission that wants to? Okay, and you guys used all your time. I don't think, I don't think there's any time was left, was there? Help me out.
It was the team.
Oh, there was? Okay, I apologize. I misread the clock. Yes.
Well, there, there was, it was 15 minutes. It, well, it depends whether you want to consider that the whole applicant team or as individual speakers.
No problem with two minutes.
I just wanted to clarify two things. One, that was first stated by Mr. Bindra's son. We're not asking for easements. These easements have already been in place since 2003 and they lay with, run with the land. So nothing is being settled. This is already attached to the property and will be, continue to be attached to the property. And they were made between my very first client and, and the old owner of the property in an effort to not be contentious neighbors and to try to work out everything in advance so nothing like this would happen. And secondly, Mr. Shobhan Paul, I don't know where he got the 2,000 cubic yards of export. We're under 1,500 cubic yards of export. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I just, I just want to say, just to remind everyone that, yes, this speaker said, to all speakers on all issues, we don't judge race, creed, religion, color. It's, we're here to try and follow the codes. And, and the codes sometimes don't care about things we care about. They actually don't probably, they address your health, but not directly. They, the, the codes are related to building and planning and so that's what we're tasked with and that's actually the only thing we're allowed to really look at. We can't decide certain things and I know, to start off with, I have questions related to some of the things in the letter that came today. Are, are some of these issues on reading the easement, are those civil matters or are they matters that we decide on?
In general, the city doesn't get involved in private disputes but over easements. There's been enough presented here to establish that they own the underlying property and they have easements in the area. If there are disputes about the nature of those easements or anyone violating them during construction, they can use a civil lawsuit or other dispute resolution matters to take care of that.
That, that's what I understood. So I hope you understood that. So there's some issues that aren't our issue. They may be your issue and that's valid, but they may not be ones that are on our agenda. And we can only address what's on our agenda. So that may be complicated or maybe that makes sense. I know we have other questions, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm still confused. Can you put up a site plan? Okay, that's a little hard to. No, but if, if, if staff has a pointer. No, the first one was good. Well, all right, yeah. Try to do it myself here. If I can figure out how to turn it on. Go back to the, to the first one you put up. Okay, so somebody with a pointer, tell me where the property line, is this a property line?
Yes, the purple line is the property line.
Okay. And this line here is the line of the, of the, this line and this line are the lines of the easement?
Yes, it's referred to as access eas, or easement A in this survey.
So you're pointing to the yellow lines, right?
Yes, the area within the yellow line is the easement.
I need a pointer. Yeah, there's two, can you see there's two yellow lines? Parallel.
Here, this, this, right here, this indicates the width of the easement, Mr. Jennings, Commissioner Jennings? That would be the width of the easement.
This area here in the, in the upper corner is, is outside of the applicant's property, right? It's not within, it's not within his fee?
That's correct. In that, right there on the outside where I have this red dot right there, the work that's happening right there is just within the easement, but off of their property.
Okay, so, and, and this, I'm just trying to trace staff's, how staff gets to this because ordinarily, unless I'm wrong, we wouldn't allow somebody to, to grade on somebody else's property without, without, without permission. And, and by the, the applicant has submitted a copy of the deed and there's a, there's a paragraph in the, in the deed which, which, which says that, yeah, okay, you can, you can go up here and you can grade. But this seems to me it's kind of the same problem that was addressed earlier as to, as to whether this is a private matter or not. If, are we relying on the, on the fact that, that the applicant claims an easement into this area to, to allow for grading?
So in this particular area where they're doing grading, there's this easement area which is identified as easement B. And then we have the road easement, which is easement A. And for easement A provides for a 40-foot wide easement for road utilities and incidental purposes per various documents that have been recorded over time. And easement B is the easement to grade, compact, shore up and maintenance per the document recorded June 30th, 2003. So for example, when the applicant originally came in, they were looking at doing a retaining wall to be able to construct this driveway. After we had discussions about that, they removed that. So what's occurring here is the one-to-one. They're just creating the transition slope, so they're going to tie back in to the existing one-to-one slope. So it's, it's, this is the area of basically feathering the grading back to the existing.
That specific area is covered by the, the grading easement? Is that what, what the analysis is?
Yes, so yes, right here, this is the, this area is within the easement B, which is for grading, compact and shoring. This area here is within the access easement, which provides for road utilities and incidental purposes. And the incidental purposes being the grading necessary to create their access.
Steve? John?
What, what is the requirement? There's been a lot of talk about the road. It looks like it's less than 20 feet. Normally we have 24. What is the requirement of the fire department on this property?
So if you can direct that question to the applicant as well, I'm sure she can expand, but I asked that question as well. And so given the steepness of this driveway, if they had been required to bring it to the required or to minimize the grade of the road, then it would impact every single driveway up along the road. So in this particular case, the fire department approved this project as proposed and they did not require them to do any grading on this access road for that reason.
Even in front of the, even in front of the, the project? I mean, I've seen the fire department say, yeah, the guys down the road don't have to be graded, but I've never seen them, I don't think, say, we don't care at all.
Well, they'll probably be able to speak to that, but I'm just looking at the length of the frontage along the road. And I, it's so steep. I, if you had been coming, I mean, you're going to have to look at my hands. But if you're coming up this steep and then you're passing their property and you're just trying to catch a way in and it keeps going, if you were to flatten it right there, then how would you catch the grade to continue the rest of the driveway, the rest of the way up the hill?
Okay, okay, so off the record, the fire department's never going up there. But which is not unusual in Malibu. Now, I look at the fire department review sheet and it says the project is, does require a fire department review. Have they done the review? Because the, the review sheet says they haven't. Now that's.
So the, the purpose of this review sheet is a planning stage review. And so the review that's, and that signs off that they've, they've looked at it for access purposes and then they check off the things that will be required during plan check. And so that's saying that there will be a review required during plan check as well.
So they may not meet all these requirements and then they just don't get a permit. Is that it? Because I look at this and it says private hydrant. I've never heard of a private hydrant, but they're, they're not public. The next door neighbor can't use them? No, I, I don't, that's not really important. I just was making a statement. I want to learn what a private fire hydrant is. But, so then I look, I turn the page over and I look at the property currently does not receive water service, but has a credit for a three-quarter inch line. Does that mean that we're not approving a well? So they have to put a main from the highway up here? Actually, I must ask the architect, I guess.
Actually, if you could ask the applicant, but there, from what, there is a water line in fact. And then there's that little structure that you see that was on the property. That is a pump house for the water. So there's water service, but they'll have to pay in to it to reimburse for any costs that were previously incurred for the installation of the water line. So no, well, may, actually let me let Laura speak to that in more detail.
The owner, two owners ago, Mr. David Matheson, he paid in when that, when Mr. Shobhan Paul was developing a property further up the road to have his little tap off of the main water. So that's where the credit is. So my clients will have to install a water meter, but it's ready because the line was brought up back previously and the owner two times ago bought into it.
So, but does it have 2,000, whatever it is, 1,000 gallons a minute? 20 pounds per second? You have that now?
I, I believe that was tested at the time and it met, and I know we've retested the water flow for the private fire hydrant as well. And it, it met the fire hydrant requirement, so I would imagine it'd be fine for domestic water use.
Okay, because it says a portion of the main may have to be replaced. It just, I'm wondering if we're giving a permit on something that, we have problems with District 29 all the time.
Right, right.
And they're, they're, they're going to give you water.
There's two houses above that have water and we've already paid in to a line to have our private tap up for a meter. So as long as there's still water going, two houses above, I assume they can provide us water.
Okay. Do, is there a, a condition on repairing the road after construction?
Yes, we did include two conditions of approval to address the concerns with the driveway. First, also that a construction management plan would be approved by the city. And we also included a condition that would require road repair resulting from construction damage.
So they, it's the standard one where you take pictures before, pictures after and
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's my questions.
There you go.
Just, just two quick ones. The comment regarding if you build this house, the other people can't fix the road in the future. And is anybody that, that's one of the speakers spoke to that, right?
No, you have to come up.
I think I did say I was an engineer, all right? And if you will look, I don't have a pointer here, but if they widen this road, because right now in places it is 16, 18 feet. It's not 20 feet. It's not 19. I know it. Okay? And in some places, like where you see the watershed? See, there's a square box, clear square box?
Yeah.
That's the, there's a, a pump station.
Pump station, right.
Okay, all right. The easement that is for the 40-foot easement that is shared by the two properties above and actually two above them, okay? All of them could have a right, all of the four properties could widen this road. But once they put up their retaining walls, they cut down the slopes, et cetera, there is no way it can be built. Because what are you going to do then? Undermine the dirt below the retaining walls? You cannot. That's a major, major issue I've tried to bring through. And by the way, there is one thing that has been reported here many times by the city, which is absolutely incorrect. The utilities that they have are road and utilities. I mean, the easement they have is road and utilities, not incidental purposes there too. I've read the document many times and the 2,003 easement required him to maintain insurance and so forth, which they did not. And on one hand, I heard the city attorney say.
Yeah, I only wanted to get, I only want to understand the road.
Okay, all right. So that, no one can build. Once they finish it, the road not going to expand. It's going to be the same dirt road and then people are going to have to live with that. That's it. They're going to be gerrymandered into that corner.
Do you have more questions? Steve?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Hang, hang on. Let me get a couple in here, then you can finish up. I, you, some speakers address the danger of this area. I grew up in Malibu my whole life and I grew up very near here. Just, just be aware, and I, I did tell this to the architect when I visited, your entire hillside is going to burn at some point. And so every one of you have need to be ready. It's not if, it's not when. And when it comes, it's going to come faster than anything you've ever seen and you're not going to be able to outrun it. You're just going to have to get out of the way. You're not going to sit there in your pool and put it out. When those fires come, my house was near there that I grew up in. It was steel, glass, concrete, brick, and it burned down. So yes, everyone should take fire safety very seriously there. I can, I guess, understand why that wall is being put in, though I've never quite figured out how they work, to be honest, but I assume they do.
That area has burned twice already.
Ah, yeah. I, and I'm sure the 78 fire, that's when my house burned down, probably then.
It was 85 and then one was in 90s. In fact, the pump shack burned down.
Not, you're, no surprise to me. I assume to the safety issue on the road, I assume we have the standard. They're talking about the road being blocked with trucks to remove dirt, et cetera. What conditions do we have? Because that road is narrow. It is very steep. I don't know if you've been there. It is the steepest road, I think, in Malibu, but really, it's amazingly steep, isn't it? What conditions do we have there to make sure there's access during construction, during dirt removal? So in case there is an emergency?
That will be addressed through the construction management plan. It's something that we've done in other situations and circumstances, whether it be related to parking or access or, or issues like that. So that way we can maintain or come up with a plan on how to use the road, get trucks in and out with the least impact as possible and being able to notify the neighbors as well if necessary.
If, let, let me ask you a different way. If this, if, if we approve this plan, if it goes forward, how would the neighbors who are concerned be involved and know what the plan is? are concerned be involved and know what the plan is? How, how would they gain that information and have input if, if they want it or, or any such thing? How would, how does that work?
That's a good answer.
You could include a condition that requires some kind of notification to the neighbors when the construction management plan has been submitted or approved or something along those lines prior to issuing grading permits.
That's public information?
Mm-hmm.
So they can be notified? I'm just trying to think ahead because I know they, if it is approved, which, I have no idea where we're at, but if it is, I'm sure they want to know that information. So they can, okay, they can be involved in that part of it if, if we get there? Okay.
Why not just widen the road right now? Simple. Build on this side, you know, those stacked block walls?
Well, we can't consider anything off of this project.
Yeah, we don't have the right to, to do that. John? Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff?
Okay.
Jeff said you can borrow a tractor. John?
Was the, the pump house is built on the road easement? And typically easements don't allow, road easements don't allow buildings on them. Was that ever approved?
I'm not aware of approvals for the actual housing for the pump, but it would be part of the utilities that would be allowed within the easement.
Isn't it built on their property, but within the, the easement that's granted to everybody else though, right? It's on their property?
Yes, it's on, it's on their property within the easement serving the upper property owners.
Yeah, my question is, I've got utility easements in front of my house and I can't build anything on them. You can put a telephone pole on them, but I can't.
This is, this is a, a water pump and a housing, so it's related to the utility itself.
Okay.
It's part of the overall water line to be able to get the necessary pressure up, higher up the road.
Okay, now, the little portion that's graded on the other, on the easement B, I guess it is, is there any retaining walls on that property or just grading?
Just grading.
So theoretically, if somebody wanted to make it a 40-foot road, theoretically they could grade that out?
Yes, I would say even if they were building a retaining wall, if they wanted to widen the road, the retaining wall would have to go. It's within the easement, which is why the applicant redesigned the initial project and now they're just using the transition grading of the one-to-one slopes. That's why they're asking for the variance for the one-to-one transition slopes.
Okay. And Trevor, again, all the neighbors fighting over the, with the road and everything else that's civil, we don't, we don't say, we can't, I mean, off this property, right?
If they want to make an argument that this is impeding their access to the easement, they, they can go and bring a, a civil lawsuit to deal with it, but what they've applied for, they've shown enough right to do what they've applied for here.
And this is just a statement, not a question. Whatever we decide, it can always be appealed to the city council within 10 days of when we vote.
This, this is an approval of an application for project. We're not granting any rights over any property here.
Right, okay.
Last question. Stephanie, is, are there other hammerheads on that street? Do you know?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, multiple.
Okay. All right, just was curious.
I've wanted to make one clarification. There, we noticed that there is a typo in the title on the staff report that says that this is not within the appealable coastal zone, so that's on page one. On page six of the staff report, we clear, we do state that this project would be appealable to the coastal commission because the, because of the impacts to the stream measures. So I just wanted to make that clarification in that if somebody wanted to appeal to the coastal commission, you would file, um, let's see, within 10 working days of the issuance of the city's notice of final action with the coastal commission, the Ventura County office. So I just want to make that clarification.
You would need to file your appeal within that period of time with the coastal commission.
Or go through the city and then do it again.
And yes, you also have the, you also have the right to appeal to the city council.
And then the coastal commission.
Yes, that's correct.
Is it, all the questions done?
Questions, anyone? Any, a, a motion from anyone?
I'd like to move approval of the, of the, as staff recommended with the follow, with the condition added to notify all, all neighbors and neighbors by that, I mean, that particular street or whatever you call it, upon submittal of the construction monitoring plan, not approval, so they can make comments during the submittal and then to, if it's necessary, to change the report to say it's appealable. And, and you had one other condition I think you wanted to change? No?
Is that, is that to provide...
It was just, I just wanted to let you know about the correction regarding the two-thirds rule, but that doesn't affect the resolution.
And that's to provide notice to everyone lower down the road?
No, the whole road.
The whole road, all the way?
That would probably reflect what we did for the co-applicant letter, so we could use...
See, they have to get, I'd get down the ones higher up the road.
So everybody on that road would receive notice of the construction management?
Submittal of the construction management plan.
And then, let me just be clear, then they would have the ability to contact the, the planning department and make comments?
The notice would, would include a contact information for the planning department?
Okay, and you don't need anything else? That's my motion.
We have a second? Uh, motions on the table. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Um, motion to Skidaddle?
I move, adjourn.
Checking.
All in favor? Yay. Thank you.
It's, it is the steepest frickin' road I've ever been on. I thought Frank is canyon steep. This thing's...